Role and establish quorum Nicole.
Here.
Jen.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
John.
Here.
I'm here as well. Nicole, has the meeting been properly noticed?
It has.
Thank you. And could you read our equity framework?
I'd love to. In the Verona area school district, our mission is that each student will acquire the necessary skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy self-fulfilling life. To meet this mission, the Verona area school district will ensure that every individual has access to the educational, social, and emotional support they need to feel valued and affirmed in their unique identities and experiences. We acknowledge that inequities and power dynamics exist in our system such that some individuals, on the basis of their identities, face barriers to accessing the opportunities they need to experience success. In acknowledgement of such, the Verona area school district is committed to disrupting these systems of inequity.
Thank you so much. We all had a chance to look at tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Motion from Joe, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Nicole, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tonight's agenda has been officially adopted. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Dr. Clarity for the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. We have multiple items on superintendent's report. And we would like to begin with a follow-up from a recommendation that the board received, a presentation that the board received late spring of the 2022-23 school year. I want to do a quick. The upper toe of the screen. The upper toe of the screen.
Thank you.
You do. But I don't.
Sit down.
Sorry about that.
We're gonna turn it back to the superintendent.
And so following the presentation and having an understanding of our equity framework and everything that involves an equity framework, we really felt that it was appropriate to move forward with a administrative rule that would encompass what it would mean to have recognition of our buildings that are on United States property, Wisconsin property, and appropriate tribal property. And so a larger table, a new administrative rule, one that not existed, that would give the school district the parameters for which to be able to fly the United States flag, the Wisconsin flag, and in our situation, the Ho'ochun flag, and wanted to bring that forward for discussion with the board. And this is a recommendation from the administration. We would love to hear any feedback or dialogue around the recommendation.
Has anyone from the Ho'ochun Nation been consulted on this? And what was their feedback?
Correct. So we've done that through conversation. We've had our liaison spin Leslie Morrison, who provided the original.
Yep.
Presentation. And so we do have verbal confirmation that the language that we were recommending is approved by our representation from the Ho'ochun Nation. So that conversation took place. Very verbal question.
I'm curious where our district stands in terms of statewide, other districts that are embracing similar philosophies around land acknowledgement, or whatever tribal nations may be impacting their district.
I'm not aware. You know, I don't, I call this the model for a reason.
That's what I was kind of assuming the answer might be. And that certainly makes me proud to ask that question and have that surfaced in this space, that this may be a big step that our district is taking. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Any questions about the language that's brought forward?
No questions about the language, but I appreciate the initiative to bring this forward, especially after hearing from our Ho'ochun staff members.
Absolutely. So just really quickly for our audience and anyone listening, go over the three parameters for representation, just so I can clearly articulate it. All flags flown over school district property must represent entities falling within the following categories: federal flags, this includes the United States national flag, and any other flag representing federal entities or agencies; Wisconsin state flag, representing the state of Wisconsin, the governing body of the state of Wisconsin; Native American land flags, flag representing federally recognized Native American tribe or nation, and nations acknowledging historical and cultural significance of the land on which the district is situated; the recognition of the ancestral land of the Ho'ochun Nation, if we have to apply the Ho'ochun tribal flag. So very, very tight parameters of what we would fly over our buildings. Also clarification, this has, these are, this is administrative rule for flags flying over the buildings on poles, not an administrative rule about flags within buildings.
Sounds good, Ho'ochun.
Thank you. So with that, I also felt it appropriate that along with the administrative rule for Ho'ochun flag recommendations, that we also moved forward as a recommendation to the board on how we open our meetings. You know, we currently do so with our equity framework, and I think this is really appropriate. But I think a presentation of a Ho'ochun land acknowledgement would also be appropriate. So I brought a verbal copy for the recommendation. There are currently 12 tribal nations who call Wisconsin home, with the Ho'ochun Nation being the primary group living around Wisconsin. No matter where you are in the state, you are on the ancestral land of the tribal nation. As we begin our day, we honor the land upon which we stand. So we have that in English and in Spanish, and like the board's consideration and as we open our day to acknowledge the land for which we have the each of our four words.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
The programs are open for board action while conducting the Ho'ochun acknowledgement.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you. All right, next we'll hear from members of our academic services team. We have a very important administrative rule, number 542 and 542P, which is a procedure that goes along with the rule, and that's for seclusion or physical restraint. Doing that presentation will be Dr. Hawkins and Dr. Halber.
Good evening. We'll get started. Tonight, we're going to, you all have received this administrative rule. And upon your review, there were a few questions generated, so we want to make sure that we see the responses to those questions and clarity around this important administrative rule. Tonight, I have Dr. Sarah Halber. She's with us. And then we also have one of our staff members. I'm Carly Adams, the supervisor of this program. So Carly Adams. And so she is one of our staff members that supports special education and works very closely to many of our students. So I'll turn it over to Carly.
Good evening. I was going to say good morning, but it's a bit fast. So I just wanted to say that our admin policy aligns with Section 118.305 of the state statute, and that was referenced within the document. And the main changes that occurred were related to the notification section as well as to the special provisions for students with disabilities. And so you have in front of you the actual document for the seclusion and restraint documentation. And that's what I want to spend a little bit more time on today, which is the notification piece. So I'm just going to go through the three pages that are in this section. The first page is the information on the cover sheet. It's really a synopsis of the state statute. And we pulled out the key points that we were trying to make sure we were referencing, which are also identified in our chapter. The second page is really looking at the recording form that is sent home to the parents. And then the third page is a debrief. So on the second page, when you look at that, it really provides more of a detailed description of the events that are happening, and that is shared with the family. It is shared within two business days, and it is then sent to the family within three. And so the turnaround is fairly quick for our families. And so what happens is on the very first day of the event, we are asked for the families to be notified, and I call them. And then we provide this in writing. And so then the third page, which is the debriefing documentation, is really a summary of kind of what has happened on the first page, where you're looking at what were the factors prior to the event, summarizing what happened, and then the procedures to attempt to de-escalate in the future. What is different on this page for the debriefing is what changes need to be made to prevent the need for seclusion and restraint? And what happened to rebuild their recorded report? When we call our families and talk about the event that happened, we get the families' feedback and say, okay, was there something going on that we needed to know about? Is there any suggestions that we have? If a family wants to hold a meeting, we absolutely will hold a meeting, but we don't require that we hold a meeting all the time. And so the difference really is those three pieces. And we gather information from the families when we call to help fill out and document what changes need to be made to prevent that seclusion and restraint. As we do this, we go back on our wellness policies, we go back on the documents. If you think about everything that Tracy Jackson has shared with us with our progressive response and our wellness, we want to focus more on that than we do on the actual event of the seclusion. We want to build on all the positives and all the things that we can do differently so that we are reducing the need for the seclusion and restraint. The other component that we added was just clarifying within our special provisions, the special education section, where we are meeting with families after the second seclusion and restraint, when it's used for a child with a disability. And that's where we were looking at the IEP and looking at the behavior plan, the same other changes that we need to make to, again, try and look at how can we proactively set up the environment so that the students are successful. What questions?
Can you provide some examples of things that might be documented in an IEP or a plan that would help avoid this for restraint or a seclusion in the future? Like, what are some of the tactics or things that we document for some of our students?
Always looking at the child's need for maybe physical activity, maybe breaks. Having more consistent stats so that they know. Building that relationship piece is always so important, to try and to build that strong relationship so that they understand the student. So as we look at that, sometimes in the IEP, we say, from the number of individuals that are working with a student, and we would say, having more physical breaks. There could be opportunities for environment health side of the general classroom for some of the instruction so that they can get it, get a small amount of instruction, maybe with one or two kids, and then go back into the classroom. So balancing how much time they're in a larger classroom versus in a different setting. A couple of examples.
I have a few follow-ups. And inevitably, I've talked to quite a few families that I think have found themselves in circumstances related to seclusion and restraint. So I think I'm just heightened, heightened space of awareness. I'm just wanting to kind of ask a few more detailed questions. The third page that you talked about, the debriefing documentation that says for school use only. So I think I've heard you saying that there are spaces where family input is used in terms of completing this and how that dialogue plays out. I'm wondering, logistically, can families see this as well? Because I know that this is the front-facing kind of family document, but if this is using family input, can this also be accessed by families if they want to see?
If they want to see.
What goes into this form? Okay. Also, just a little bit curious about this same form in terms of timeline. So I see that the family-written report goes within, I feel like it's two and three in different places. Is it two or three business days?
Two on written and two in delivered in three.
Written in two, delivered in three. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Delivered in three. And then the other timeline is when it's a student with an IEP, we need to reconvene within 10 days after the second seclusion and restraint.
Okay, so then I, go ahead.
So we reconvene an IEP meeting, and that's per the law for the state statute, that it's within 10 days. There is a question about the debriefing. And we parallel the 10 days to parallel with the law of the IEP. But we want to have a meeting, it can be prior than the 10 days, but it's a maximum.
Okay. I'm going to state a few things back to make sure I understood. So the 10-day piece is specifically for students that have an IEP for whom an incident has happened.
If it's a student who holds an IEP meeting.
Okay. So if it's a student that does not have an IEP, is there still a frame for a number of days? Is this process happening?
Not immediately, but that's why we put the 10 days on there, so that it's somewhat consistent with the debriefing. So we have the 10 days for the IEP, and we have 10 days for the debriefing. So that it's a consistent timeline for all of us.
I think in some ways, I'm just imagining a scenario playing out. And in a lot of ways, 10 days feels like an eternity. If a kiddo, right, was in a situation where there's stress and trauma and, you know, just, right, 10 days just feels like a lot of time.
So they would have, sorry, but they would have initially made contact. So when the incident happens, we're still calling even before we send this home.
Yes.
So it's just up to 10 days. So I've made contact with you by phone, we've sent this home, up to 10 days, meaning family might work, it all, however, but we still have contact with you.
For sure. And I even just mean also for the internal folks, right, for our school staff, of what supports have been, dialogue happening with staff that are working with the student that was in a seclusion or restraint incident, just those conversations too. So yes, the project nature of reaching out to families for sure is there, but then what's also happening in the interim to make sure staff members are, I mean, just right, all the moving parts of.
Generally, it happens within two to three days because it's when we're filling out the written report that we're trying to also debrief about that. When we have a large team, it may take a little bit longer in order to get the whole team together. So we might need the expertise of a speech path or the occupational therapist, and not just the individuals that were present at that moment. When we, a general practice is when there is an incident, they get together before the end of the day and debrief, okay? Was there a line? What happened? And then they do more of the detail, okay, now let's look at that immediately, let's look at that. And that's where it takes like the 10 days. So we are always making sure that when a student is entering, returning back, that we have a plan in place. How are we doing the restorative? How are we making sure that they feel safe, they feel comfortable coming in? How are we, oftentimes, we do that even at the end of the day, after the seclusion or restraint happens. How are we doing that even before they go home? So that they feel like the next day is another great day for them. So we always are talking about that. We go back and then for office.
And I think you just touched on this. I'm actually curious also, because we do have more staff now who are here designated for restorative practices, how that may be. I mean, I see this now as a question to be curious about ongoing, because this is something we haven't had as in place as we do now, how just our restorative practices could be a part of the process with this as well?
And I, we do talk about all of that. And I think every situation is a little bit different on how we address the restoration and the rebuilding of that support for the student. And so sometimes it might be a circle, sometimes it might be something different. So it's really focusing on what is needed for that student to feel comfortable coming to that.
So just as an example, when you were talking about the restorative practices, and we think about our RTI or our time going to the core. So Stoner Prairie, just in this first week, two weeks actually, the majority of their staff has been training in restorative practices by our restorative practices coordinator. And so when you think about those proactive moves that, or that understanding that the staff now have, that too helps to build that foundation and that mindset of restoration as one of the next steps to follow. So I mean, to your point, we look at restoration. There is work that is intentionally being done in that area so that that coupled along with this will help to restore us. So they go back and today is a new day, we start all over again.
Yeah, it just feels like so many layers of trauma for everyone involved. And so I just appreciate being able to lift that piece up and how we're thinking about that aspect of this as well. I had one just more logistical question. So I think the front page of the, whatever this is called, I'm forgetting. Some of the language here comes from DPI, and then some of the language in the actual administrative rule is like from the statute, and there's just a few, like, just places of slight disconnect and not matching up perfectly.
Well, maybe that was.
Okay. And that would just, because obviously the language, the definitions, all those pieces make sense. Super helpful. And I think you've touched on a little bit of this, but one I'm anxious then to see, it sounds like in October, we get to actually dig in a little bit to the seclusion and restraint data. Is that correct? From last school year?
Last school year.
So I look forward to more conversations about that. And then just as you both have been sharing, just how we continue to let the mission of our district also just wrap around something like this. I just feel like there's so much happening in incidents where students are just experiencing such distress at school and how we continue to just keep our overall mission of the district centered and how our new process for families support is.
Absolutely. And it all just goes back to really making sure that we're starting in the classroom, rebuilding that relationship, giving a lot of support and interventions. And this is really like the last step. We're trying to build all of that, and this is just that final piece that we have to, for listening.
That was my last question. I knew I had one more. Sorry, y'all. Here, section, let's see. Use of physical restraint under, oh my gosh, I'm losing it because I had different notes. Oh, I guess it's page two, top of page two. General procedure is number one. Just a little explanation as to the shift. So what got crossed off in red and replaced in green? It sounds really similar, yet I'm curious, it still feels like something maybe is lost there. So I'm curious if you could just offer some insights as to how that language was.
This language was taken directly off of the state statute. So what I did is I just outlined it 100% to our state statute. So that's where this came from, and that's why there was the change. Thank you.
I have one more quick question. This might be kind of silly, but have you ever gotten any feedback from staff who might have been involved in any of these situations that like, there's a lot of, you know, what happened to rebuild therapeutic report with this student? Are there any additional steps needed? To your point, like, maybe it was too many people at one time, or, you know. Are there ever any discussions in these documents of like, what does staff need as far as support? If, you know, they felt like this was traumatizing to me, or like, I didn't know this situation, like this student, I don't know, you know, something's ruined, and we have to fix it on my end too. Like, can you speak a little bit to how we support staff through that as well?
Sure. We actually, they have a very rich voice in this, in the restoration. And on the very bottom, additional level, that's needed. So there's some technical, but that's where we go and talk about that. I'm not quite sure, let's practice and make sure that I understand and see what the triggers are, or that there is a specific approach that we're using for a student. That's what Carter actually comes in and provides a lot of that support and guidance in that area. If it is something like, I just need a break, we definitely take that into consideration. We offer, just go take, give yourself some time, and we got that, come back when you're ready. We do that a lot as just like a natural, just like, students need a break, our staff need that, and we're there to help support us.
Awesome. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you very much. Any other questions from the board?
Thank you. Next, we're going to move to item B, school security and safety updates. And I'll be led by Mr. Sapp.
Very low, remote control issue, so just tell Lori, we might just switch it to back. So as a way to update law starting the school year for safety upgrades and kind of where we are with the safety of the district. About one of the biggest improvements that we have by far is our security interests at Savannah Oaks and Stoner Prairie. If you're kind of starting from left to right, it's going to be hard to make out, but the very image to your far left, when you walk into Savannah Oaks, you will see that greeter station, so that window, and you can talk to them behind there, right? You don't have anywhere to go once you enter that space, right? You're kind of secured in that area as it should be designed. The safety image in the middle is kind of from the greeter station looking out to that person that will be at the window. Then the third image to your far right is kind of just an overall picture that leads into personal across office. And so having these security injuries, I do know, you can go to the next slide, Lori. Stoner Prairie, I'm sorry, yeah, Stoner Prairie, same thing. When you walk in, you kind of enter that entryway to your right, downward door, you'll see the greeter station window, kind of closer up in the middle. And to the far right is the general area leading to Mary's office, first Stoner Prairie. And you know, prior, we had, you know, the microphone outside of the school, and we kept the doors locked, so it was somewhat secure. But once you got buzzed in, you just had access to, you know, to everywhere, which, you know, try to control that as best as possible. But this allows us to completely control who has access to our school. So now all of our schools are complete. Last year, we added some extra secured doors to make sure all of our elementary schools also have that feature. And so, you know, we control the access of our schools, where this is a huge improvement for safety and security of our schools. Next slide, please. So we also did, and are still in the process of doing a major camera upgrade. First of all, all of those greeter stations, the new ones, while also the other greeter stations all have a camera added. At first, there was not a camera in every greeter station. So now at every school, coming to that initial foyer, you're immediately being recorded. And our middle schools, and Savannah is still kind of underway, but our middle school did a major camera upgrade. There were sections of the building, entire length of the buildings, that just did not have any camera coverage. And so it presented a lot of problems for our middle school principals, something that they had been asking for for some time. So we're finally able to get that done. But we just completed Savannah Oaks there, just now beginning to install all of those additional cameras. So what altogether cover around 2025 additional cameras. Many of those cameras are two lens or three lens cameras covering a lot of the extra areas. So that's good. We, so off of school safety, now have school safety consultants, right? They, for a while had these rules that each school district had to follow, but they wasn't really checking on the rules or trying to enforce where things were happening. They are now. So I spoke to Patrick with our consultant and he did our safety audit, the path, our safety audit, packed it pretty easily. And he even commented that our school district had of the 140 students on this case, though, had one of the best threat assessment processes. So as schools, we have, you know, we do still have, you know, a very strong threat assessment process that we train on at the beginning of every year and then, and they've ordered it also. So that was, the principals will continue to complete, in following school ways that we got last year, they want to get their safety training, you know, earlier in the school year, principals will be completing their schoolwide safety training by the end of September. So on our drill tracking sheet, which is what I use to track, you know, how many drills are being done and the time that they've been done, I already noticed that the principals have, all the principals already had to pencil in for a day to perform those training. We're in communication with the former police department. When I say we, I mean, our, for justice coordinator, Ms. Walsh and I, our communication with Lieutenant Dar, the former police department, collaborating to create our peer use for. So process that we've been trying to implement, be underway for some time now. And so we were still working through, it's kind of a process that we're creating, right? To really fit the community of Corona and to fit our school district. So the, the only model that we have is a day like Tyre, right, who's what that's created that no longer exists. We're putting a lot from there, but we're also really tailoring it to, you know, what will fit our, our community. And we think with the whole reporter process, it involves not just the school, not just the police, but businesses, community organizations, a really, you know, wild process that we can get the right restorative line for each one. So the good thing is that those talks have started and we're, we're on the way to, to developing that. And so that's going to be a huge development for our students that do it by themselves and in someone's trouble that they will have that cushion, that buffer there to not allow them to completely, you know, get into the community system.
What were you planning for that or is that just, is it pretty open ended or is there a timeline goal?
We, there is no like explicit like deadline timeline that, that may be something to consider. Right now, I'm thinking about the completion of it. I would have to explain it for based on what we got right now. I would have to say for four months. Like I said, we, we have to, it's something that we're kind of creating and tailoring from, from, from scratch. And now we kind of, the wrong place where it does not have a lot of experience yet. And so a lot of it is, is having to be some, some coaching and training for them and also so dealing with, we have a ton of experience because I'm really hoping to develop a lot of that. So, you know, part of it is looking at the conferences that we have to go to, to get other models and things like that. So it's taking a bit longer than, than planning, but I would estimate that no more than another four months, we should have a learning model in place to, to start this sort of process. Go ahead.
So with this, is this, when you're collaborating with the VPD, is it around incidents that only happen at our schools? Or is it any of our students that might be trying to stay out of the juvenile justice system?
Right. And so that, that's the goal, right? And so, and so how do we, how do we take in the incident that happens at festival or incident that happens at, right? And bring it in, from my experience, when I did youth court as a police officer, everything happened with the kids, right? And that's the piece where, like I said, there has to be some education, there's some training on how, how that works. This is a, it's a pretty progressive model that we'll, we'll have to teach and try to get that in. That's the goal. That's ultimately my goal is to have where if a student does anything anywhere in a Corona or Pittsburgh community, that we can have some restorative processes in place for that.
That was the only other thing I was going to bring up is Jen and I are just writing our sales notes. Meredith and I had a chance to tour Briar Patch, which is now part of Fitchburg as annexed from the town of Madison. And they have, I'm sure, as you know, they have some awesome people on staff too who deal with, who really try and actually push the model of restorative justice. And I think that would be so cool as well to involve them, knowing that 30% of our students base is based in Fitchburg as well.
Absolutely. That's very helpful that you mentioned that, I didn't know that. And that's part of what the restorative process is all about. It's really involved in all of our community partners. And so the only thing that, that we're looking at as we develop this process is like, who are all community partners in Corona and Fitchburg? Now, I'll admit, I'm aware of Briar Patch.
They're just newly part of Fitchburg. So you're not, you're not too far behind, but yeah.
Okay, great. Let's just know. So it's, it's things like that. We have to pull all of those, we, we think about restorative processes, we have to have solutions and ideas for students to go to, to repair her. And then just get a network there, a community network there. That's one of the priorities to do it. So it don't, it's, it'll take, it'll take a little bit of time, but hopefully that maximum establish that.
Yeah, I appreciate that you're doing that. Love to hear how it raises, as it develops.
Sure, sure.
And there's the hope to grow, you know, Fitchburg PD, right? If we're talking about, if the geography matters, so if we have a student who's involved in an incident that is in Fitchburg versus Verona, if that partnership ideally would extend beyond the jurisdiction of Verona, if this is kind of just the starting point because we have this lovely thing about our district, right? Where we could be part of the Madison PD as well because of the geographical locations of our students and how that may be a part of this.
Yeah, that's, that's automatic. You can redo service, you know, students are not just in corner. And I'm sorry if I'm saying corner, but that's all right. No, you know, Fitchburg has, has, have done, done some restorative processes already. And so it's really about getting everybody to the same place of, of being able to, I don't know, really understand how this process works. So. All right. So next slide, please. So update of our security team, where they're located, I'm not sure if you have it in front of you, but it's here, Farlet, Bachelor Ridge, Quentin Cannon and Brian Brown, both are really good, solid security assistants, working very well to the community and the students at Bachelor Ridge, known very well, look up to them. We have the high schools, Austin, Allen, Hale, Cortez and Mitchell Jeffrey. We also have one opening at the high school. So if you want to, you might need to look at more security, you know, my own means, tell them to apply. At Savannah Oaks, yeah, well, per now, there's a huge asset was that open at Savannah. So it's updated in our security team. Next slide, please. And so we're just going to continue with our, our safety and security measures that, that have been successful for us, you know, keeping us safe. One of our strong is, as according to the office of school safety, is our threat assessment process. And so I will begin threat assessment training sometime in October. We have quite a few new principles, just to make sure that everybody understands the process, how it works. It is a process that is, that is in collaboration with the former police department. We know we have been part of that training as well, just to make sure, you know, we're still continuing that process to keep our, our students safe. We have our incident response protocols. If you click on the link, I mean, I do want to touch on one thing, our incident response protocols. Can you do the slide down? There is one change that we made to our incident response protocols. As you know, our incident response protocols is a building secure classroom hold. One change that we made last year, we received a credible threat that one whose department advised us is securing hold. And the reason we decided to add that is because we found ourselves in a situation where securing the building wasn't enough because there was a seventh period coming up. We had no way of knowing, you know, if the threat, which was credible, was nearby. So we needed to control the movement of the students, right? We didn't need our students who leave schoolroom to leave the building or, or work or different things like that. So securing hold is a combination of a classroom hold and the building secure. So we're going to secure the building and we're going to require students to actually stand their classrooms as well to control movement. And so that's just an added layer that we put on our incident response protocols. But our principals have, have been training this and we will be continuing in this, in this model that, that's been successful and has worked for us. We can go back to the slide. Our tip line, definitely tips on our, our tip line right now, that we are, our, our principal, our busy at work right now investigating tips as they come in. And I took it when I say that because our tip line is so actively used and is so effective. Our, our main source of information, our main source of preventing things from happening is from our see something, say something model that comes through our tip line. Our tip line, the tip line that was established, actually even before the statewide tip line, our students are familiar with it. We created new flyers from all across our district. We brought new awareness to the tip line to our middle schools who years prior were not using it as much. And so we did kind of a whole campaign to make sure they know about it now. Tips from, from middle school have increased as well. And so this is a very effective preventative tool that, that we use to keep our students safe. We're, we're continuing with the model of safety over convenience, like what I mean, we're still checking our exterior doors, ready, we're still, teachers are still teaching their interior doors closed and locked as an added measure of, of safety. And our tabletop discussions, which is a variety of subjects that I choose, starting October, in October, last year, we, we dealt with swatting attempts quite a bit. I haven't quite picked a subject for this year, but what I'll do is pick a couple random topics and we'll go into our emergency response team, our code emergency response teams and say, hey, here's a scenario, what will we do? Right? It's really a great way to get them to thinking, to do that most memory and they really appreciate it a lot. So those are, that's kind of our, our update for, for safety and security. Any more questions?
I just want to say thank you again for doing this work. I think we often forget how much this is a uniquely American school problem. And they, they don't have threat assessments in European schools. And I just appreciate how much effort you and your team of professionals put into this because every parent who sends their child through any doors of our school counts on you all to keep them all safe. And I know, I think last year when you presented this, I cried and couldn't even get my question out. I'm a little better this year, but thank you for all of the hard work that you and everybody on your team put into this. It's incredibly important.
Sorry, go ahead, sir. I'm really excited about this student court event going ahead and would really like to just keep hearing more about it as it's progressing through with our partners and kind of get up to run it. So I think that's such a crucial piece. Sure, absolutely. And I could said, and I could tell this at some times, these updates. Absolutely, sure.
We appreciate always hearing, you know, the updates that you have, the hate that we have to hear them. But we also appreciate the, you know, the attention that's behind them and the responsiveness. I think when we talked, I don't think it was last year, I think it was two years ago, kind of the safety over convenience, wouldn't be, you know, door locking. And one of the questions that I could be kind of raised at the time was, will this be something that everyone, you know, hate to think that there was, I think there was an incident kind of right before that was implemented? And then things relax a little and there's always the next time. I mean, how, how is all of it going with that? I know it is, it is inconvenient to have doors locked indoors, but it is.
You know, it's, it's actually going very well. Our elementary schools have all of their, their doors closed. And that's where I thought at the time when I presented that I would get, you know, the most wish back. But they actually responded very well. And you go into our school, they're, 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 they're closed and locked. And so I, I spoke with a teacher who acquired knowledge about that. And basically the way she, she said it was that she was creating like the system of when, you know, students use the bathroom that she uses, you know, throughout the class. And other, other times the doors, it's just closed and it works. So it's going really well.
Especially if it's a normal operating. I think what I mentioned, I've been in, you know, some elementary schools, you don't even notice that it's, it's a change. I mean, it's only a change to what you remember what it used to be. And it's, so it's, the thing has been taken away from the security environment.
Exactly. It's, yeah, it's, they're, they're doing it and it was smooth and it's just, it's just happening. So.
Yeah, I think there's a reference to schoolwide safety drills sometime this month. Can you elaborate just on what those drills entail and what the, can you, are parents going to be notified in advance that it's happening or any details you have on that?
Sure, absolutely. So schoolwide safety drill, other than fire or anything, when we say schoolwide safety drill, it's about our option based response to a critical incident. So some sort of active tool, pretty much drill, that it could include evacuation, it could include barricading, and if this age appropriate, it would include counter, which is what the high school and some of those will practice as well. And typically what we do is we send out two communications, one kind of like the low that, that's just coming in the number one shortly, right? Right before it happens to our parents. I believe last year sometime we'll have some parents that we elect to have their, their kids participate, but that's very few though. That's very few. Most, most parents is, you know, treated as a normal process of the drill. I know for Savannah Oaks, I know they're going to be walking to their evacuation site so there's no fear, like this, like ways aside, they're going to be going back for, for their, for their drone, the high school will be kind of one of all three layers for their drone. So principals are gearing up, kind of preparing for what, what their particular drill is going to be. I just said that it has to be like one that you have to practice in September. And now, I'll go back to that. One of the changes that we did now, that we're going to be doing every quarter, I mean, do fire drills, you know, monthly, all the time. There hasn't been fires, there's last year's system, last year's 50s, right? But we know what they're, what they're happening. And it's something that, another thing that our students are asking for more, just more frequent drills. So now we've changed it to every quarter where these drills have to happen.
My last question is the, the tabletop exercises that you mentioned, are those done in coordination with VPD and Fitchburg PD?
Yes, they are. Yeah, we did, we did swatting last year and Sergeant Dar, between at the level and Greg Gitz, one of the officers that we partnered with to do the tabletop discussions. And Fitchburg, we could add the discussion. So they, they all worked, they all worked pretty good. Swatting and now there's like a statewide training on swat. I just want to say we were kind of ahead of curve. But you know, so yeah, this year, you know, like I said, I'll just pick a topic and, and you know, we'll hash it all with VPD or Fitchburg and then we'll, we'll do it.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right.
We appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Appreciate it.
All right, next we're going to do the budget presentation where, not the budget presentation, sorry, approval of the budget will become.
Short presentation.
With a short presentation, it's reminded before you do more action, we'll use a submission report. Again, you have to use the clicker in the back.
The audible clicker in the back.
We may have a manual clicker since the others are more good. We do have a brief presentation to set up on our biggest or one biggest board meetings of the year coming up on the 25th. So tonight, Pete and I went just to a quick review of the budget goals and we went through a timeline ahead of us all the way to November, a preview of the agenda for the budget here in the meetings, see if there's questions there, and then a board vote for the preliminary budget. So as a reminder, we work with you and work with our school community to plan really around three main goals. Make sure we're making student centered decisions as far as what's going on with our operating budget. And that happens this year. And that happens this year and beyond. Uh, planning for future capital needs and that really is related to us keeping taxes in check, prepayment on debt. And making sure we have an eye on what's going on, uh, in the future of this district. Uh, and continue to respect our taxpayers, uh, with purposeful long-range planning. Uh, I reminded the board a number of times, you now have the taxing authority, if we wanted to, uh, to have, uh, the mill rate a dollar or two above what it is. And we elected not to do that, uh, kept our promise in terms of what went on with referendum. And that is the budget we worked on together and we're delivering to you tonight. So the, what we, what we had in terms of what we could control and what we couldn't in this budget, uh, again, uh, the state budget is something that's completely out of our control. We now know the per people permission adjustment, uh, we will find out aid here in the month of October. Uh, and we know what we get for special ed reimbursement. Uh, we have continued to have an eye on cost of living, uh, which will be another thing we will have just at the turn of the calendar, uh, in January, where we just ratified our two contracts and we're already peeking into, uh, next year and how CPI applies to that. Uh, and, uh, again, property value plays a role in terms of how it's connected to the mill rate and upsets. Things we do have control over, our staff, that was, but that was kind of our goal number one there, uh, how many staff we have and what the compensation is. Uh, and what we do with that management. Because we can just manage, uh, benefits, our operational costs and the use of one-time funding. Uh, this year we have just a little bit of ESSR that's built into that budget, no TID closure this year. Uh, but TID was, uh, certainly a huge factor last year in terms of debt prepayment and, uh, how we manage the new, uh, property that we had coming into the district's tax books. Um, and managing taxes overall for our, the remaining tax period we had in place previously. We've used this little graphic and then more than anything, this is for our public, uh, this is our continued balancing act in terms of setting the budget we are going to vote on this evening. And here we have, um, so, um, this is the budget Pete and I previewed with you at a previous board meeting. That was in the budget book, uh, that we put together. Uh, it should be noted at this point, uh, our recommended budget has an increase of about 3.4% in terms of the levy. Uh, but we are fully expecting new construction, uh, to gobble up half or even more of that levy increase. Um, and, uh, you can, um, quite conceivably have flat or even lower taxes, uh, related to, um, the mill rate we're discussing, if possible. Um, depending on what happens with property valuations. There is the mill rate, um, and as promised pre-reparendum, uh, we, uh, built a budget with a forecasting model, uh, that we thought we could deliver, uh, a stable mill rate. And the, and the budgets come down the road and that's the budget we presented to you tonight. Uh, we will actually, um, get, um, property valuations and aid numbers here in October. Um, and it shouldn't surprise the board, uh, if we come back with a flat mill rate of 1140 by the time we get to October. Um, but it's certainly not out of the realm of possibilities that we actually would pass, uh, a mill rate that would be lower, uh, than the one that we're actually passing tonight. And we'll find that out in October, uh, and make recommendations, recommendations to the board accordingly. Uh, but Pete and I can say with all confidence, uh, that the conservative numbers we built are something, what we know in the budget book, uh, that that addy minimum 1140 will be the mill rate that we would be able to finalize in October's budget. Uh, and, uh, again, there's a possibility it would be even lower, uh, than 1140. We should be good news to the community and to this board.
Should that be at a maximum, the mill rate we'd be on?
I think that's fair to say. I think that's fair to say with assumptions we built. And again, uh, a reminder, this budget, uh, this time of year is, uh, our best conservative guess on where October ends up. Uh, and October will have some more information. We'll find out how many students land into the third Friday count, we'll know exactly what happened with property values and we know what we'll get with aid. Um, and those are the big three things that, um, are still out there that we need finalized numbers before we even pass, uh, 1140. Uh, but I would say, uh, for sure, uh, we are in a spot that 1140 would be the max. Um, and we'll, we'll look at where the numbers come in over the next month or so. Super good news, yep, that's exciting. Uh, and again, our, um, the, the hard work of the board and previous boards put us in this position. Um, and quite frankly, our taxpayers' willingness to prepay a whole bunch of capital debt, uh, put us in a spot, I think probably in a spot the state to do a mill rate neutral, um, historic operating referendum, uh, so that, um, and it, our, our students and staff are in a very fortunate place, uh, to come to this place every day. It's all worth it. Um, our three-month look ahead, lots of work still in front of us. While we're going to put a, uh, a board vote ahead of you tonight, third Friday count, uh, already happens this week Friday. It's amazing how quickly that sneaks up. And then we'll have, I think, good numbers by the time we get to, um, our annual meeting. Uh, but, um, Craig and Pete and our enrollment team, uh, have a, a few weeks of work to, uh, get those third Friday count numbers to DVI and feel like, uh, more in a new spot. And we can report a firm number in terms of where that's going to end up. Um, October, the two big things that, the reason we have, uh, an annual meeting ahead of, uh, the, the, um, actual levy being passed. Why we live with two budgets, uh, we don't know, we're going to get it up for aid, that comes October 13th. Uh, and then, uh, we actually, uh, will come to you with the finalized budget on the 3rd. Um, but we will give updates along the ways we have more information on those numbers to be better. Um, and then Pete and our board clerk have a little bit of work to do with our municipalities by the time we get to November 3rd. Questions on the timeline or anything at all that I've done through so far?
So the third Friday is legit, the third Friday, not the third Friday we're in school, it's the third Friday of the month.
Correct, third Friday.
I have something to do as well.
That was the Friday we're in school.
Yeah.
I'm just surprised they're running in September.
Also that, there's that.
The first one was the first.
Exactly, exactly, that, I know.
It's like, I don't get why.
Yeah, it's crazy, it's already here. I, um, I popped into Dr. Clarity's, uh, office last weekend, like, it took me five minutes this week to, uh, wonder if we had a convocation this week or last week. There's so much that's going on in this pizarro. Uh, now we already have a third Friday, this Friday, it's amazing how quickly it came. Um, but I, and we actually expect those numbers, we, we do think, uh, we will be up again as far as, you know, we've got a couple of very large kindergarten classes and um, we feel like we continue to see the trends of this being growing schools. Uh, all right. Lastly, um, I, um, did a screenshot out of our budget book in terms of what will happen at the budget hearing, uh, in the annual meeting. Um, most of us, I think minus, uh, we have minus Juan Carlos and Corby, um, have been through this before. Uh, so we'll have a, um, a quick update, uh, in terms of the state of the budget, many of the things the board has already heard before, but this is certainly a very public meeting. Uh, and, uh, you'll hear that from Pete and myself. Uh, and then the annual meeting, uh, will be, um, there'll be a state of the district built into that with Dr. Clarity. Um, and then, uh, we will have a number of electors, votes, um, that will take place, um, towards the end of the meeting. Um, and a financial report from our board treasurer, um, regarding the financial status of our school district, uh, including where we, um, are at with projected fund balance and so forth. Questions on anything ahead of us, including, uh, the budget hearing and meeting?
First, uh, Madam President, do we have, uh, do we have other OEs or Dr. Clarity, do we have other OEs or results policies that we have reviewed during this meeting or is this just?
It's six from five to six is the annual meeting at six o'clock, we have our regular meeting right after that.
Thank you.
So we've opened our polls three times.
Who's going to run that meeting? I have just a random question, if you'd rather just wait, but because you mentioned it, do you know of any future really exciting tips that are lingering out there?
Yeah, they're, uh, I wouldn't say, um, any in the very near future that are exciting and juicy like the one.
Like the ones we had.
Pittsburgh has like five or six, uh, in the mix, but the timeline is long.
Okay.
Uh, and I think we're still five or six years old on, uh, anything in the moment. There's a Costco area that has one, uh, but, um, so they're, um, not in the immediate future, that's going to have an impact in the next couple of years.
Thanks, future exciting kids. I think we talked about it.
That could be, that could be a teacher.
Teacher, exciting.
Anything else?
Anything budget, just have to laugh at times because it's a lot.
All right, um, so a big meeting in a couple of weeks, we will be back, uh, hearing from Pete and myself. Uh, Doctors Clarity, I will, uh, turn this back over to him potentially, then you can either turn it back to Meredith. Uh, or at least we've got the slide on our whole board, the board vote for, um, our annual one.
Yeah, I'm, uh, we'll go to OE two really quick, that's official OE two with the indicator for OE two, maybe we'll go back to a board vote.
Okay, all right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, this year.
And thank you for, um, making sure that we are up to speed and well-educated on.
All right, most important work we do.
And then when we're talking, you know, about exciting kids, you know, you've done your best.
Uh, so next item on the superintendent's report would be, uh, a recommendation for a modification to OE 2.3. Um, and first I want to thank the Board of Education for their time and dedication last Thursday at a workshop, knowing that, uh, family commitments and, uh, professional commitments that another meeting on is not easy, but it was definitely well-worked and it helped us, uh, a lot of time for, uh, for this year. And I think that's been able to do the additional workshop for board meetings was a great.
Yeah.
Uh, so with that, uh, we'd like to make a recommendation for OE two, which is emergency superintendent succession. Uh, and that is for, uh, excuse me, regulation for OE 2.3 to combine OE 2.3 and OE 2.4 to read at no time during reporting period where lapses in protocol reported to the superintendent during debrief with board, president, or the appointees succession. Uh, and given that was a previously approved indicator, that would need to go down to board action for official approval. So at this time I'll close the superintendent's report unless we've got a question.
No, that's all good. Okay, so if we, uh, want to move into board action, um, the first order of business we have, I'm going to zoom back up to, um, our first, uh, we have recognition of the Ho-Chunk flag recommendation, um, this is for either approval, um, adoption by the board, we're not modifying, we're just signifying our support of it. And it's the, um, the flag recommendation as well as the language of knowledge. Is there a motion to adopt? So motion from Jen, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Nicole, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The, uh, recommendation has been unanimously adopted, thank you. Next, we have approval of the 2023, 24 budget book and a motion, let's scroll down, thank you for writing it out because I'm like, do I even know how to read numbers that big? I am, yeah, I can do it. Um, is there a motion to approve the preliminary operating budget for all funds in the amount of 102,166,521 dollars as detailed in the budget book? Motion from, uh, Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Joe, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion has unanimously passed, thank you. And then next we have, um, is there a motion, um, to accept the recommendation for combining, uh, OE indicator, um, 2.3 and 2.4 using the language as specified? So moved to, there's a motion from Jen, is there a second? Second from Nicole, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The, um, indicators have been unanimously left, I think very much. Are there any general board updates? I mean, you saw the first lady, it was that.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
And it seems like something has happened since.
Well, it's like you're saying, how long ago was that? What do we want to talk about?
We didn't like, we asked for a paper, you know.
We had, I, I just feel like, it's a few things.
We had multiple special children come out on stage.
We had kids start school.
We drummed you into the arena, what else would you?
That's so cool.
The life of a parent, it's never enough.
It's true, it's true.
Yeah, so how was the, um, first meeting?
Very presidential. It was very good. I will say, I really liked having the representation from the national unions as well, because I think there was, there was so much excitement around just like hearing these people who do all this great work and still are active teachers. And I think kudos to, kudos to administration, both at Central Office and Glacier Edge, because I was like, um, Tony's here, oh. Get out, like, everybody's, Tammy's here, because I'm on a first-name basis at these schools. So like the security, I was like, oh, man. Um, but I think it goes, it, one of the things that I think is easy to get lost is that not only would our school not have been selected and our school district not have been selected if the education and the experience wasn't world-class, as Dr. Clarity likes to remind us of all the time. But I think it, we also wouldn't have been chosen if we hadn't worked so very hard at our really important relationships with our teachers' unions, um, both BAE and Vesta. And I think that just goes to the credit of the entire team, I know Rochelle's not here, but I know how many hours she puts in to really making all of our professionals feel heard, because they are our talent, without them we are literally nothing. We're buildings and chairs, that's it. So I think that was the coolest thing to sit there and realize was like, wow, they're not going to come if the teachers' unions say like, this school district sucks, it's harming teachers. They came because we are trying to really improve our partnerships. And I think that, that made me feel the warmest of all the things that are happening in that room.
Very cool. The comments are on, it's on YouTube too, so I'd be able to watch real quick.
That's cool.
Very proud of this, so, and for everyone who went and who put the tie into coordinating the logistics and making that happen, I'm sure that's no soft beat.
And communication was amazing. I think we talked about how there was a little.
Better talking?
That was, yes.
It was amazing.
Yes, and I, I do have to say, so many staff members, I remember kind of feeling this a little bit last year, that there was still this, I think, what is, what is this really like around here for folks that have been here a while? And I just, the comments and the, the absolute sentiment of staff, it is amazing. It is such a testament to how much work the administration has done in such a short amount of time. Just, I have goosebumps even just talking about it. It really is amazing that staff just feel like at a cellular level, things that just for some of them is so different than how they've experienced being here in the past.
I like what you're saying, it's, it's a market, a market change, and just the.
Yeah.
Energy was so very high.
Yeah.
I do expect, uh, Dr. Clarity and Chad to have pom-poms, maybe some later next time.
Yep, at least you guys have a pom-pom.
I bet you, we two stepped off the stage pretty quickly when the dance off came up. Maybe glitter in the tie, we do have glitter on our tablecloth now. So we're moving in the right direction, but our two, our feet, I mean, they all came together and so thank you. But I think our staff, most importantly, as you said, know there's a change in the energy that we bring to, you know, the kickoff of the year.
Yeah, but it's not just that day, right?
Right.
Teachers are savvy enough that they know that walk isn't matching the talk, so that, it was really celebrating something that staff absolutely feel tangibly in their work and drives them into this next year.
And so many cute kids, it was so.
And I think that's, that can't go without saying, it was so student-centered.
Yeah.
Um, which, and it just, I think we all want, just look like, it's such a great feeling that it kind of carries through. We're waiting till next year, that's going to be during the last.
She's awesome.
Right, she has no fear.
She was already sending them on, it's been a hot second.
I know. We have literally no idea.
Figuring matters.
Oh, my God.
That's great. Then enough of throwing, mine would be with me, that's personal.
Wow. I would put money, but that isn't happening.
And Meredith, she'll write the C.
Great talk on behalf of the board, that was really great.
You were incredibly endearing.
Thank you, Frank.
So if I may really quickly, I want to, uh, give a public acknowledgement to especially what can be visited from, uh, Dr. Biden, Teresa Taylor, who is the principal of Waste Your Edge. It is, was just phenomenal through and through, from the moment that it was even a kind of conception that this may be. It is, was just phenomenal through and through. From the moment that it was even a kind of conception that this may possibly happen, we, we had to put the work in as if it was, I don't know if we were gonna be the final score or not. And, you know, she's, if you know Teresa, she puts everything she can into supporting her, her staff in the beginning and students. And just, I just kept reminding people, she's trying to open the school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a little detail.
You know, she's, you know, she's, she's opening the school while, while this is happening, so just want to probably thank, thank her. And if you see her just, or give her an email, just tell her she, she was just amazing. And she always sent her staff, as she always does, she always sent her students, as she, and that's why I think Glacier Edge was, was chosen. And she's a phenomenon here with a phenomenal team.
Yeah, absolutely. Certainly represented the ASD extraordinarily well. I can't imagine if you heard the, uh, the first lady's gonna be showing up at your job in your chart, so that would be very. Okay, uh any other updates or can we move on to public comments? Any public comments? No public comments, we can move on to superintendent's consent agenda. We're gonna have a chance to take a look at consent agenda. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Consent agenda has been approved as presented. We can move on to board consent agenda. There are three items. Um meeting minutes from the eight twenty-one meeting, from the ninety-seven workshop, and then the um NCPA as replacement. Are there any questions? Any comments? Board consent agenda has been approved as presented. Um if we can take a look at future agenda items, there is one modification that I want board members to make note of. Our next meeting, um budget meeting starts at five. So we will be starting probably at five. Six o'clock, we will have a regular meeting, but everyone needs to be here at five o'clock. Our annual meeting is um at five o'clock on September twenty-fifth. Marcy, can you make sure that's updated on the website? I didn't even check to see if there was. Thank you. Okay. So with that, um we are going to, is there a motion to adjourn to closed session under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five sub one, sub E to deliberate or negotiate the purchasing of public property, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public activities for the competitive or bargaining reasons required for closed session regarding potential purchasing of property? Motion from Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Jen, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with John.
Next.
Joe?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
And aye as well. We are officially in closed session. Thanks, everybody. Um we'll just take a couple-minute break and move into closed session.